Good evening and welcome to March 20, 2023, Common Council City, Carnesville. Our rise for the pledge allegiance led by Bill Gray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Bailey?
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening. God, we know that there are decisions to be made, there are things to be discussed, and so we ask for your presence to be here. We ask for wisdom, for knowledge, and for discernment, and we pray that you would preside over the meeting and that you would bless it in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Please make sure your phones are off on your phones. We'll begin with roll call.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Here.
Councilman Barrett?
Present.
Councilman Williams Jr.? Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Robb? Councilman Gray?
Present.
Everyone has the minutes to March 6, 2023, regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not on the table motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on down to new business. Approving the pending ordinance 3884, additional appropriation for the general fund on the second and third reading. I did have a couple of questions here. I was asked to read for the meeting. It was from Ms. Lori Moffey, who was in attendance last week. She has some questions on understanding if it was at the airport. We may not have mentioned that the last meeting, but the meeting when we was talking about where we're going to have it, we did mention the airport. I do apologize for not stating that again, but it is at the airport. The airport will need to be closed. The airport board has authority to do so. The NFA doesn't require anything, but they just have to submit it and they can close it. And the airport board is on board with everything, and so they can handle it and take care of it. So there won't be any need for a backup facility because of the whole big airport. She was asking about parking, whether there'd be adequate parking. We've got roughly 175 to two acres that we can utilize for parking, so there's plenty of parking around here. She asked about camping, where that would be if there's enough site. There's, I think we got around 10 acres reserved for tent camping, and then we got around three acres reserved for like bus axles and stuff like that. But it's all primitive camping. There isn't any electric or anything like that. I'm thinking on how many we get, we'll have any showers and stuff we'll bring in. We just won't know until we get the pre-reserved amount. And then that's the camping. And then how would the reimbursement be divided with the airport and the city? Any other problems would be split 50/50. That's how we just want to split that.
And didn't she say with the airport and the festival committee?
Well, we go to the city, and then we have to determine if we want to go to the festival. That's not my call to make, but the council's call to make. I'd like to see it go to the festival so we can continue to do the events, not have to come to the council every time we do this. We've done this a couple of times. They've been successful every time, and then we really want to grow these things. The goal is to get this so it's self-sustaining, so that we don't have to come to the council to ask for money, and then we can just keep growing these events every year. That is the ultimate goal, yes.
I didn't have that document in my packet. Was that... Are you?
It was last time.
Saying the last time document was forwarded to this.
This was an email she sent to everybody, huh, council? None of us answering her questions?
No, I'm talking about the 3884.
We got that last...
Last time.
That's last week.
This document last time everybody got?
Yeah, I got that one.
That's it.
Okay. So when I was looking through it, I was thinking I was missing one more document.
No, that was it. So I just want to answer those questions. That way it can get answered, and everyone can see the questions that were asked. So I just want to make sure I clarified on those, because there was two different meetings, and everyone heard the first meeting. So with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3884 on third reading of the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
Councilman... Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yeah.
Councilman Collins?
Oh.
Councilman Warner?
No.
That's three to two.
Three to two. Okay, it passed. Thank you very much. Item B, approval pending... I'm sorry? That was third reading. We suspended...
Yeah, that was third.
Second reading, you suspend the rules, go to third reading. Kind of weird how they word that. That's how it's kind of weird. Item B, approval pending ordinance 3887, addition of handicap parking space, Chief Fullos.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I got a call from Ms. Allen sometime last week requesting that she get a handicap parking space in front of her residence. It's feasible to put one there. We also asked that she submit a letter from her doctor, and she has done so. So I'm requesting that we grant her a handicap spot in front of her house.
This was approved by the Board of Works earlier?
Earlier, yeah.
So this is the Board of Works approved, pending council approval. Anybody have any questions for Chief? Not on the table motion to approve pending ordinance 3887 on first reading?
So, second.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion for a third and final reading.
Motion.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item C, just stay a minute, I might need you. Approving pending ordinance 3888 to removal of a 15-minute parking space on the western avenue of Eighth. I'm just going to make it a regular... There's two, I'm sorry, there's two parking... There's two 15-minute parking spaces. We're just going to eliminate the 15 minutes and keep them regular parking spaces. So the Board of Works approved that for your recommendation as well. Anybody have any questions on it? I need some information here, but I think everyone got the information.
I have a question with the picture that I got. There's a no parking sign anytime on that same side.
Yep. That's the curve leading up to it.
Yeah, there's no parking just on a curve.
It's painted yellow. There's a real sharp curve there that's painted.
I noticed that.
The other two's on a straightaway, and there's room to pass.
Usually on that, the no parking sign is usually before that. Am I not correct?
Before what now?
Is it before the no parking zone?
Yeah, it's before that. Where the sign is, it's right on that curve, as you know.
Well, not to interrupt, but what I mean is the sign prior to the no parking zone. Am I looking at this wrong?
Are you looking at the other two signs on there?
Yeah, I see what we want to remove them. I don't have... They should be there.
Yeah, there's just to the... Just on the corner where you can't...
He's talking about the placement of the no parking sign, and I'm assuming it's because of the location of the curve, but I would have to double-check that.
Okay.
On how close the curve that sign could be.
Yeah, I mean, it is just because of the curve where that no parking is.
I think if... I noticed that it's yellow, but you know, it's kind of dirty, but it's neither here or there. I think the sign needs to be moved back. What's your take on this?
Are you saying this sign right here needs to be the...
At the start of the curve?
Prior to the offense.
Right.
What... You're...
Yeah, but usually they're at the start of where you can no park.
That's what I mean.
Well, isn't that where this is at?
It's the end.
At the end.
We'll have to look at the MUTC standard on how close that sign could be to the curve. But it is marked yellow.
I get that, but you know, let's do it right.
I get what you're saying. I mean, I think it'd be...
Generally, a no parking sign is at the beginning of the curve.
At the start, that way they do.
Thanks for clarifying.
But the 15 minutes is...
Thoughts anyway.
No, we'll have a look at that standard, make sure that's right.
Because it really don't make sense to have it there because it's like telling you can't park where we've allowed them to park.
Yeah. I don't know. It's been in there quite a few years.
About 100 years.
Yeah, and I'm assuming...
No, not that long.
When you have the two 15-minute signs right there next to it, people understood, but now if you remove those, it might be a little confusing. So we'll make sure we can meet the standard on that, close to the curve.
Thinking one makes good sense. I'm all for that.
Any other questions on removing the 15-minute, making it regular? If not, entertain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3888 on first reading?
So moved.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion for a third and final reading. Have a motion...
Second.
And a second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item D, approval of resolutions 2023-18 through 25, IC code transfers, Rosemary.
Resolution 2023-18 is a resolution to transfer $50,000 from the police vehicle line into the police non-reverting. Resolution 2023-19 is a resolution to transfer $61,802 from the DOT other equipment line into the DOT MVH non-reverting fund. Resolution 2023-20 is a resolution to transfer $1,000 from landfill other equipment into the landfill other non-reverting fund. Resolution 2023-21 is a resolution to transfer $37,500 from MVH other equipment into the DOT MVH non-reverting. Resolution 2023-22 is a resolution to transfer $15,000 from park mower into the park non-reverting fund. Resolution 2023-23 is a resolution to transfer $20,000 of park other equipment into the park non-reverting fund.
Questions for Rosemary?
Yes.
I have.
Shouldn't just be $1,000?
Yes.
It's only $20.
I have a question, if you know. $15,000, is that for a mower?
It is, well, the Board of Works approved them buying a mower last meetings, and she purchased it. So, but what we do is we appropriate these two lines. We take it to the non-reverting and pay it out of there, so that way the $435 that's left over is there for them to use it to either repair it or go towards the next mower they need.
Okay.
And there was a typo on 2023-20. In the parentheses, it should have only been $1,000. And I think I stopped at 23, so resolution 2023-24 is a resolution to transfer $100,000 from local road and street into the local road and street matching fund. 2023-25 is a resolution to transfer $275,000 from MVH restricted into the local road and street matching fund.
Not on the table motion to approve resolutions 2023-18 through 2023-25 transfers.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion of second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item E, approval of resolutions 2023-26, fire reimbursement.
Resolution 2023-26 is a resolution to reimburse $202.34 into fire other contractual services.
Motion to approve resolution 2023-26, fire reimbursement?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Okay.
And a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on down to department reports. Chief Hart.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Get everybody when they're fresh tonight. Everyone should have a copy of my February 23 monthly report. We responded to 264 calls for service. A year to date, that's 549. In my staffing report, they still do have two staff off on Workland's comp. Over fuel usage. We did, in February, we completed our Lucas training. We had training from a striker who manufactures Lucas. We had them down three days and were able to get all the shifts through Lucas training. They're still in a trial phase. We've had it... They've been deployed twice so far. Getting very positive feedback from crews, the ERs. We're getting really good data. That's one of the things with these devices is everything is recorded on them as far as data-wise, you know, compressions and pauses and time periods and so forth and so on. Getting some really good data from them as well. Did file our recertification paperwork with the Department of Homeland Security for a two-year renewal of our EMS certification through the state. That's really the highlights, not a lot as far as exciting stuff going on, just a lot of that sort of thing. So, anybody have any questions?
Would you explain the Lucas training?
What would you like to know?
It's just the broadband of the whole thing in a short sentence?
It's an automated CPR device.
That records for the public, it records this, right?
It records what it does. So if it does chest compressions and it does 312 chest compressions, it'll show it did 312 chest compressions. What the ratio is, whether it's a continuous ratio, whether it's a 30 to 2 ratio, you can adjust that. Whether the compression depth was manually set or was it set on automatic sense? So if it determines the depth itself, which is how it's defaulted, you can change it, but it'll record that. It'll tell you how many times the pause button was hit, the duration that the pause button was hit. Any pause over 10 seconds is automatically recorded. There's like three to four pages of data that it records, and then that overlays with our cardiac monitors and that sort of thing. So we can kind of compile that data into one spot, is what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
They're very, very complicated devices, as I say. There's so many parameters in this device that it's kind of hard to... It's kind of hard to put a synopsis on it, but you... That's basically what it's recording, is it's recording that data. It's not recording video, it's not recording audio, it's just recording the data of what it does.
And that's not recording the patient, right?
No, no. But, anybody have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Superintendent Steele. Good evening.
Okay, so some things that are going on. I do want to let you all know that we have hired a sports director. His name is Logan Newkam, and he will start on March 27. He comes from a background of sports. He was a triathlete at Connersville High School, and then he's also a graduate from IUPY with a sports management degree. And so he brings a lot of energy and some excitement to our sports director position, and so we're really excited to have him on board with us. The next thing on my list is that we are still hiring for lifeguards. We're looking for 20 lifeguards, and we will be holding a certification class in April, and you have to be at least 16 years and older to be a lifeguard with us. The Kubota mower, as it was discussed earlier, we have purchased that Kubota mower, and so we should be receiving it within a couple of weeks. Everyone may have received our new park logo. We did update that, and so I just wanted everyone to know that we do have a new park logo. Easy Facility, it's a new software program that we're implementing at the park, and this is going to make things a lot easier for registration, renting our buildings, registration for sporting events. It's all going to be online, and once we get to the point, we can put it on our website, and then people can go online and register for sporting events, and then eventually they'll be able to book facilities on there as well. And so this is just going to help us manage all of our things that we do in our office. It's going to help us manage it so much easier. And so it's also going to offer an employee time clock as part of that program, so that's going to be implemented in that program. The next thing moving on is sports. So we have had soccer registration going on for about a month now, and I'm happy to say that we have over 500 kids registered for soccer, which is, I don't know, I have, you know, I don't know the past, but I would assume this is close to breaking a record. So we had 506 register, so we're putting those teams together. They have been drafted, and they'll start practices soon. So we're really excited about how many people are coming out to play the sports here in town. And then we have baseball, softball, and T-ball signups still going on through March 30. The next thing on my list is we... I have been talking to Connersville High School, and they are excited to be a part of some different sports. And one thing is the high school football coach, head coach, Ryan Lynch, came to me and presented an idea of flag football. And I was really excited because I had already been thinking about that anyways, and so he would love to help us, partner with us to implement that flag football for the fall program for our youth. And so that's something that we will be working on this summer and getting that started. So he's really excited about that. He wants to grow the youth program so that when they get to the high school, you know, they're ready to play basketball, play football there. The next thing on my list is I am working currently with Jalissa on some grants. We're going to be looking at some grants for the Living Well-Aging Well program and then also Summer Discovery. So those are some things I'm doing. And then I put on there community involvement, just some places I've been in the last month or so speaking. I went to Rotary Club, the Healthy Fayette County Meeting, and Community Voices, and I've also been meeting with Andrea Napier, the community coordinator for the Help Grant, and so we've been working on that. The last thing that I want to share with everyone is that we are having an event come up, coming up on Thursday, April 6, and this is our Brownies and Bunnies event. It's open to the public, free of charge. It's from 5 to 7, and we're partnering with local businesses in town. It is Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month, and so we are partnering with quite a bit of organizations this year that are going to have booths. And so we will have, we have a beautiful backdrop that's been donated, and the Easter bunny will be there, and so Channel 3 is going to be there taking pictures and live videos, just like they did at Christmas time. And then we will have activities, crafts at Brownie Walk, and then the Food Council will be doing a cooking show and handing out food. So it's going to be a great event. We're expecting over 500 kids to come to this event.
I'm excited that Coach Lynch is going to be doing the football. I know, I don't want to date him, he's going to feel old for me saying this, but the graduating class this year with the successful football season was one of the first flag football teams we... Coach Lynch actually helped start many, many moons ago, but that's a result of getting in early and starting that sports program when they're young, just to teach those fundamentals. I'm excited to see this happening, so good job. Thank you on that.
Yeah, we're really excited about that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Chief Jones.
Good evening.
Everyone should have a copy of my February report.
We'll start off with overtime. For February, $1,329.57. All of that total was FLSA overtime. I didn't have any call-in overtime. If you go clear over to the right where the totals are at, you can compare the running totals this year versus the last two years. You can see we're doing pretty good so far this year. I got everybody healthy and things are going well, so that's a good thing. Moving down to fuel usage. I had 348 gallons used of fuel in February for a total of $1,364.31. Moving on down to incidents for the month of February, we had a total of 128 total incidents. 30 of those were fire-related, 93 were EMS-related, and we had five auto accidents. Gives us a total for the year of 279 incidents. Training hours for February, we had a total of 70 instructed hours. 40 of those hours were fire-related training, and 30 of those hours were EMS-related training. Moving on down to inspections, had 30 total inspections for the month. A few of those were re-inspections, and then we had six hours of fire investigation total. And then following that, you'll see the standard detailed reports for each of those categories. You can view whenever you feel like viewing those. I'm not going to go over all those. One other thing that I'd like to note, last week we did training with CSX, which is, for anybody that doesn't know, it's the railroad that runs through town. We had three scheduled. They had to reschedule one. I'd like to get all three of my shifts to take any kind of major training like that. We originally had it scheduled in 2020. We had a pretty large diesel fuel spill on one of their engines on the east side of town, and after that, I got with some of their representatives and asked for training, and they agreed to do that, and no sooner than we were going to schedule it COVID hit, so that pretty much stopped training for, you know, a good two or three years, and you can't train on train incidents very well over a computer. So they... I reached back out to them. Obviously, everybody knows we had the big incident in Ohio, so that's been on the news a lot. So I reached back out. They, you know, was happy to come do training. They remembered when I reached out to them before. Had a district gentleman from, I think, the whole Midwest, eastern portion. He said he was in Maine, I believe, the week before, come down, did our training. It was excellent, excellent training. We learned a lot. I invited, not only was it the fire department, I had police, EMS. The mayor came, the EMA director came. I had a couple gentlemen from the utilities that came. Obviously, you know, something happens, you know, on the rail. It could happen close to the river, anywhere really. I mean, we've got storm drains to protect, so really it's going to affect, you know, all departments if we have something, you know, large scale like that. But we did learn a lot. He taught us, you know, a lot of things to look for, gave us a lot of utilities to use to when, you know, something like that happens, and how to figure things out quick, and then basically we got to take all those tools and, you know, decide how we're all going to work together if something like that happens. So that's something where all the departments are going to sit down and come up with some plans. Obviously, you know, you can't... It's tough to plan for an incident like that, but you do the best you can, and then you just have to adapt when something happens. So we appreciate that training. That was very good training. Like I said, we have one more that we have to schedule for one of the other shifts, but it was really good, so. Touching back on the last meeting, when I brought to you the equipment, I was going to give you a little update on that. Mr. Warner asked me to get some quotes, some additional quotes, and he did send me some information on some other dealers, a couple Ford dealers, and I did reach back out to him. I just wanted to update the council that every answer I pretty much got was that the bidding process for fleet vehicles, for government sales fleet vehicles, has already closed and may or may not open back up sometime this summer, and nobody has received any pricing for if that period opens back up. So that being said, I did get a email from Reedmans, and he asked me how things were going, and he said, "Well, I just so happened to reserve a spot for you just in case you do need to purchase that truck," so that still is an option. So I know the period for advertising has not expired yet, so we can't do anything until next meeting on that. So I just want, I'd want to give everybody an update on that.
So is there any special equipment for rail problems that you know of?
For the most part, we're somewhat limited on a large-scale event like that. We've got equipment to deal with small spills. We've obviously been on several spills that's, you know, involved, you know, tractor trailers. We did have a larger spill out on 44, if you remember, a few years ago where the tanker rolled over. We can handle small spills. I'm going to say that our initial reaction and response on a large spill like that would obviously be to protect the public, probably do some evacuation, and then, you know, try to protect, you know, infrastructure after that, whether it be buildings, sewers, rivers. Obviously, like I said, they gave us the tools to call in, you know, the people that really know what they're doing, so.
Their numbers.
Yes, and for the most part, they can be here in probably about an hour. So the initial hour is going to be on us, you know, to coordinate... So the, the initial hour is gonna be on us, you know, to uh, coordinate with all of the other departments to figure out, you know, what we really need to do. Obviously, we need to protect the public, um, get them if we need to evacuate. Um, that's the most important thing, depending on what happens, so.
The trip, Reedman's quote, was that a, I don't recall, was that a state bid price?
Yes. I got, like I said, I got, uh, when I brought you the information last meeting, I think I got a total of uh, five quotes from different Dodge dealers. Um, and they were, they are pretty close. Uh, Reedman's happened to be maybe a few hundred dollars lower than um, they were the lowest bid by maybe a few hundred dollars. And I'd, like I said, I'd um, he just happened to reach out to me and ask me, you know, how things were going. And I, and I said that I was um, gonna get some more bids. And I believe, I, I talked to you since then. And he did say that um, he went ahead, you know, the bidding period was closing, so he did reserve a truck if need be. He said, "If we take it, fine. If we don't, fine." But, and I, I mean, that was good, that was good of him to do that, really, I think.
Right.
So I did appreciate that.
I appreciate your checking.
Yep, no problem. Yes, yes. And, and they did, I mean, they did happen to be the lowest bid, so.
Were you able to check to keep the um, other equipment at the price?
The, the SCBA's unfortunately are going, I just, I called um, the three M Scott rep, which is uh, the make, the maker of the SCBA's. It's not the um, the dealer that we get them from, but I called him today and uh, just to see if there was any way that we could maybe order them on the fourth instead of the first, because that would be after the next meeting. And he said that they won't, they won't budge on, on the price increase, so.
So when is the new price effective?
April first.
So we could ask the council to approve you purchasing those right na- uh, tomorrow based on?
Approval of the appropriations.
At the additional appropriation of the ARPA funds on the next meeting.
If that's a possibility, I mean, it would save us probably nine thousand dollars. But my, my initial, um, I was thinking that the advertisement period was ten days, and it was fifteen days. So obviously, it didn't make tonight's meeting. I think we still have, what, a day or two?
Uh, it requires fifteen days, and there's no way I can put that advertisement in the newspaper the day of the meeting.
Right, so.
So it'll always be.
Two meetings.
Two meetings out.
Right, so I don't, if, and I'm not sure if that's a possibility of approving me to go ahead and order prior to April first pending the funds. I mean, like I said, it, it's gonna be probably about a nine thousand dollar increase on April first. And I, if I'd known of the increase. Yeah, the increase, yeah. But, I mean, things are increasing, it seems like every other month anymore, so.
I mean, they won't be in and.
No, they're, they're about six months out.
But it would save us nine thousand dollars if you have the council's approval to go ahead and order.
Correct.
Um, tomorrow.
Can we do that with other?
Yes, you can make the motion and.
I'll make the motion.
A second. We have a motion in a second. All the favors signed, five of them signed.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Well, I appreciate that. I wasn't sure we could do it that, that way, so.
I wouldn't either, sir.
All right, thank you. Chief Boss.
All right, everybody has a copy of the February's monthly report. Our overtime's staying the same uh, month to month, and uh, averages out to be the same for the past four or so years. The gallons of fuel uh, is about staying the same also. It's at about nineteen hundred uh, gallons of fuel. Everybody has our incident reports. Um, I just wanna highlight that uh, we have a two hundred and ninety-four um, traffic incidents. Um, the guys are really staying on traffic, traffic stops and uh, a lot of drug interdiction. Um, we ended up in February with a little over a thousand calls. Any questions on that so far? Also, earlier today, uh, to Board of Works, um, I requested uh, to promote another detective. Um, so last year in April, Detective Rosser came out. And, and this is an open position, um, and it wasn't filled last year. I didn't replace him uh, because of the manpower issues that we had. At that point, we were four down and eventually five down. So I didn't replace that uh, third detective. Uh, we're getting to be full staff. That was the intentions all along, to replace him when I got back to full staff. And uh, we're about a month out from getting there. So I'm requesting, I requested them, uh, Board of Works, and they uh, approved to replace him earlier today. Training hours for February was a pretty big training month. We had two hundred and sixty-four hours of training. Four officers attended the Indiana DEA conference. Uh, it was a three-day school. A lot of good information there at those schools, um, several good topics. Also, I wanna let you know that uh, we replaced Detective Sherwood, who's coming out in April first, back to patrol with um, Officer Jeremy Wilson. Uh, he started last Monday on the Detective Division, and last week, I sent him to Investigation School right off the bat. So he's um, familiarizing with the detectives and their cases this week. We have Officer Everman at K-9 School up in, at Bonlake uh, right now. And he gets out the third Friday of April. And we also have Officer Leon at ILEA still. He gets out the same day, so the third week, we're, be at full staff. Can't wait for that. Uh, K-9 training, uh, is twenty hours, and they did one demo at the middle school. Also, we had twenty-two incidents involving drugs um, in February. We took uh, two hundred and forty grams of marijuana, five grams of heroin, seventy-seven grams of meth, and twenty-six grams of fentanyl. Uh, fifteen paraphernalia incidents, twenty of those were um, syringes. Uh, and to keep everybody up to date on the um, the transient peddlers ordinance, uh, we finally got it, everything uh, to go online. Uh, safe hiring is our background check. Uh, we've completed everything we need to complete where the, whoever the vendor is. They'll just go online, uh, click on safe hiring, answer what they need to, and make the payment there. So we're not taking any money into the Police Department. Um, and then the results come back to us when they, when they uh, are, is completed, and we'll issue them their certificate if they pass it or whatnot. Or if they don't, then they don't get one. So that's all set up, uh, and I, I believe John's gonna make sure all that's on the website, city website, so. Also, for information, um, for the replacement of Captain Fee this week, we're doing uh, captain interviews um, to decide who's gonna take his place. And shortly after that, we are gonna be in the hiring process to replace him on the Police Department. One last thing, um, I've been working with Mary Rosemary and Adam. Uh, we're finalizing some quotes on vehicles. We have got a couple uh, quotes in. Um, we're gonna look at, take a look at them as a group and make a good decision there. Um, and prior to that, I'll make sure everybody knows what we're, what we decide on. So we're in the process with that. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy. Okay, I uh, we'll talk about the utilities report. Mike's sick, by the way, so I'll be giving all the reports tonight. Um, I wanted to update you on our digester project. We, we did a digester project in two thousand seventeen through nineteen to make our digesters aerobic instead of anaerobic, which means they're fed a lot of air from the bottom up. And the way they designed them, it turned out that um, the piping and everything in the bottom got too hot, and it overheated and started melted everything. So we had to put in a cooling loop in that, and it's been a couple of year uh, solu- coming up with the right solution to that. And so there's, if you ever have been down there, you know that we have three big blowers, roots blowers. And those things get so warm, and it was just such a close proximity to the tanks, that it would get hot. So now it has to kinda, we call it a whoop-de-doo. It kinda goes through a, a whoop-de-doo, and it cools off before it um, hits those pods. So that project is supposed to start up, is supposed to be finished on the first two tanks on Thursday. So we're gonna do a startup and hopefully that whole thing before it starts. It only does it in hot weather, so we're trying to get it done before summer. Um, I think I, I don't remember if I reported it to you guys, but we had a resignation at the wastewater plant. Erin Johnson left and went to Columbus to take a new opportunity for her. So we've been juggling a little bit. Mike is going to the wastewater plant, and he's gonna pretty much be down there all the time for probably any number of months, until we get somebody hired and trained and um, trying in the short term to transfer her knowledge to him, and then he can transfer some of that to the new person when they come. Hoping we can find somebody that can just hit the ground running, that will be able to step right into the job, but we'll see. Um, our Ninth Street Water Plant, it's back online. It's been down about a year or two. You've probably heard me talk about over the last year that we were doing some uh, I won't call it an upgrade, but stabilization efforts over there to, we put in one good pump. We had to redo all the electrical equipment to be able to put a VFD, a variable drive pump in over there. And so now we have one good pump where that station is pretty good booster, if we need it, if we ever have a big fire or something, so. Um, the guys just did all the testing and got that thing back online. So once a week, we'll run that. And then uh, anytime we have a fire or something, we can always kick it on for a little extra pressure if we need it, or if we had a boost in usage where we needed to turn it on, we could, so. The last thing, John, do you have that picture of the headworks by any chance, the big hole? Um, our headworks project is continuing to pour all of the, I'll show you one of these pictures probably once a month or so. That, so you can see how it's coming along. They're starting to pour all the floors. Eventually, there'll be a, a um, building sitting on top of that. And that is the sub-basement that they're working on right now, and that's where the screening equipment and the pumps will go. Um, I was telling everybody today, it looks like our uh, dewatering is gonna be less risky than we originally thought it was gonna be, because now we're pumping quite a bit less water. I showed the Board of Works today. I'll tell you guys, all around the perimeter of this hole is pumps. And all those pump, there's about nine of them, and all those pumps were pumping about four million gallons altogether. And now they're down to pumping somewhere maybe around one million. Um, I have to obtain a sort of a unique measuring device so that we can measure exactly what our flow rate is um, that we're pumping out there right now. But the good news is, we're pumping a lot less. That'll make it less chance that we pull those chemicals over into our site. And the better news is, if we do, then we'll be able to pump those chemicals right over to the plant. If we were, if we were still dewatering four million gallons, that flow would be a little too much to put on the plant day in and day out. But at a million or two gallons, we could easily handle it. So if we do get into those chemicals from next door, we can pump those through our plant and isolate those and treat them, and um, uh, that'd be a cheaper and a more, not only cost-effective, but safer method. Um, I wanted to tell you about the, we're gonna open the compost site back up on April first. Um, everybody's been itching for us to get that done. We've got um, we started a couple of weeks ago picking up the one item heavy trash pickup. I wanted to let everybody know that on Earth Week, I'm supposed to meet with my environmental assistant tomorrow, and we'll get all this spelled out. But uh, either the week prior to Earth Day on the twenty-second, or the week after, we're gonna pick up one ID, one item of heavy trash each day, so that we can, you know, spring cleaning time might help people get rid of some junk around the house, and maybe even out in the yards and on the porches. Um, so that'll be either leading up to April twenty-second or uh, following. But I'll get those details out here pretty quick. And the last thing I wanted to tell you is that we, you might have noticed on Facebook that I started a topic about recycling this past week. Um, just mainly wanted to get everybody's feelings on the price point. You know, we set in ordinance when we raised the trash fees that it would cost people seven dollars a month um, to have curbside recycling picked up when we um, re-implement it. And that they would have to pay a deposit on the tote, which is seventy-five dollars. So I just kinda wanted to get that out there and see what kinda reception those numbers got. And it got varied responses, but quite a few people said just simply yes, that they would like it. But then, you know, others um, thought that was too much, and some others misunderstood and thought we were trying to charge seventy-five dollars a month to pick up recycling. And so if we, if and when we get that going again, we'll have to, you know, educate everybody to what the deal is, so. Um, kinda wanted to bring that up and see if anybody had any thoughts on it. The um, Trash Committee has been talking. We're gonna meet again and try to come up with some solutions, and then we'll be reporting to you about it. Anybody got any questions about any of the reports?
I have a couple. The pine trees that was cut down, where was that at?
Where's it, where are you reading that?
Uh, the Motley Street Department.
Blocking.
Dead end of Twenty-first Street.
Yeah, there was a pine tree in front of a stop sign that we cut down.
Over there by.
One pine tree.
It was over there by, I believe it's Shomel's house. Can't remember the street.
It was at Twenty-first and Ohio.
Is there anything being done with those trees, his trees?
Whose?
Shomel's trees up there.
I don't know anything about that.
Up there on Lincoln.
Haven't heard anything.
There was some people complaining about they couldn't see coming down there because they were blocking the street and stuff, so.
Where on Lincoln?
So, on Twenty-second and Lincoln? That's where.
I wanna say that's where his house is.
Where it goes up the steep hill?
Go up the hill, it's Twenty-second, isn't it?
Yeah, that's where he lives, but I haven't heard any complaints about that.
It's your old drive.
They didn't get to me.
It goes.
I don't really.
Oh, that, when I seen that, I thought maybe that was it.
No, this was back in that little dead end by uh, Glenn's Barbershop back there. There was a big old, it wasn't, it wasn't really a pine tree. It was one of those big old ugly bushes that kinda grow straight up. But it was blocking the sign. There wasn't anything else we could do.
Arborvitae?
Is that what they're called?
Depends, but probably.
Yeah.
But most people call bushy pines or arborvitae.
The other question I have is the next door, is there something down here? Is there something we're gonna have to do with that eventually? To just clean up the, your next door to your headworks?
Oh, on the, on the park? I don't know. I think, it's my opinion, we should have a big conversation about that after we get finished and see what everybody thinks. You know, see, when we get done, we probably test all those monitoring wells on that site and see what the residual chemicals and everything that are left there, and just put the information out and let people, not only people, but all of you and the Park Board and everybody decide how they feel about it. It's.
I don't know if you've been getting them, but I've been getting a whole herd of questions on that.
Well, a lot of people are upset that it's closed, but I think that it would be um, unsafe for us to have it open while all this is going on. And I would just rather put the information out there and let people understand what they're dealing with if they go down there. And, and it may be entirely safe, but we just, I feel like it needs to be talked about amongst the leaders of the city and decide what to do with it when this is all done. amongst the leaders of the city and decide what to do with it when this is all done.
And we're still testing the water, correct?
Yep, we test some things every day. We test the monitoring wells over there that we put in that are in the path of travel of the flow of the water once a week. Well, we have been doing it every two weeks, but we decided that as we got closer to the predicted chemicals starting to move, we'd start once a week, and that started last week. So we're being very vigilant, and like I said, the fact that we're pumping a lot less dewatering makes it much less chance of it being unsafe, but we'll, until August, when this dewatering ends, we'll be keeping a really close eye on.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Grab a rope, is there somewhere we can go get someone to go over there where they're doing that and clean up the curb? You got the curb actually coming up.
Where you at?
Eighth and Western.
Yeah, Eighth and Western. The curb itself, I'm not really concerned about, but mainly just the curb that's actually popping up and coming out of the roadway.
That piece of concrete, I don't think's part of the curb, I was over there today.
Well, whatever it is, it's in the roadway.
I think it's just a follow-on from somebody's.
I'll get somebody over there to look at it tomorrow.
Appreciate it.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
For the month of February, we had nine hours and nine minutes of meeting production, fourteen hours, forty minutes of original production. We are working on a new show, which just premiered last week, the TV3 Center Stage, which features regional artists. They can come into the studio, and we produce a show. It usually runs about forty-five minutes to an hour. And the nice thing about that is that it creates a kind of a catalog of artists that we can call upon to maybe perform locally here when we get the Market Street Plaza built. So that'll be nice to have that. And these are new eager artists that are wanting, you know, some notice, and this helps them get that out there, so it's kind of a nice trade-off for them. That airs, by the way, Monday through Wednesday at nine PM, Saturday at two PM. Last thing is, of course, we have the mayor candidate debate that will be this Friday at six PM at the Milner Center, and that will be live on TV3 Cable and YouTube. Any questions?
This is double Glock, and welcome.
Yes, there will be limited seating, everybody, yes, that'll be in the banquet hall. Thank you.
Anyone on old business, any old business?
I have, the only thing I have, Mayor, is the nine-one-one advisory board meeting is the same situation, where they keep training people, and then they keep losing people because of finances, as you know. I guess the director's been working quite a bit more hours than what they normally allow people to work, to fill the spots, and they're wearing their part-time people out. They just recently lost another communication officer to Rushville. It seems like everybody pays more than this communications center does, I'll just put it that way. They're trying to get some radios through the emergency, emergency management and a grant for different departments, and we're gonna have to see how that goes. That's all I have with that.
Any other old business? This line is business. Public, anybody out there? Nope. Here, take a motion for German.
Salute.
Have a motion second, all in favor, sign five by seven, you guys? Any opposed, same sign? Wish you care, have a good evening.